You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is February sixth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access La Porte County dot org.
Positive statements.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Michigan City City Council Meeting, uh, February the sixth, twenty twenty four. Everyone would stand for the flag of allegiance and the Northern Christian prayer.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Coulter.
Present.
Mr. Chris Bolinsky.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Maldonard.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and no one absent.
And just a reminder to everyone, please silence or turn off your electronic devices so there's no interruptions during the meeting. Thank you. Madam Clerk, uh, or is there an approval? I'm sorry, approval of the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty third?
Sumo.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Coulter and seconded by Councilman Cora. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. Are there any reports of standing committees? Any reports of standing committees? I don't believe so. Finance Committee, report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, due to that, the Finance Committee, um, does not have an official board established as of yet. The finance for the Michigan City Riverboat Boy Claims Docket for January twenty third, twenty twenty four, was not approved during the prior council meeting due to that we did not have enough in attendance. Um, we could not take a vote with votes over Zoom. So the Claims Docket for January twenty third, twenty twenty four funds number two, two, three, five. Riverboat claims, six hundred fifty four thousand, thirty seven dollars, two cents. E F T, four hundred eighty seven thousand, three hundred seventy seven dollars, sixty two cents. Total claims, one million, one hundred forty one thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars, sixty four cents. Are we going to do these separate or?
Pardon?
Are we going to do these separate? Do you want to vote on this and then do the next one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to accept the claims from the January twenty third?
Sumo.
It's a motion by Dr. Cora.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, uh, Ms. Nylle on the vote.
Well, Ms. Maldonard.
Yes.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
And Mr. Pres Bulinsky.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed. And also.
Mr. President, could I ask a question?
Sure, Dr. Cora.
You had explained. Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone.
If you looked in your agenda and it has Claims Docket for February sixth, twenty twenty four, for thirty nine thousand, four hundred and seventy four dollars, that Claims Docket has been revised. So for the Claims Docket for February sixth, twenty twenty four, revised Riverboat Fund number two, two, three, five, four hundred twenty thousand, one hundred ninety three dollars. Riverboat E F T Fund number two, two, three, five, zero dollars. Boy Development E F T Fund number two, five, zero, four. The total claims is for four hundred twenty thousand, one hundred ninety three dollars. The thirty nine thousand, four hundred and seventy four dollars included Kenny Machinery LLC for twelve thousand, four hundred dollars. La Port Chrysler Inc., twelve thousand, eight hundred, seventy dollars. Overhead Door Company, uh, fourteen thousand, two hundred, four dollars. Accounts payable to Reeth and Riley Construction Company, Inc., three hundred eighty thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars. Again, total claims for February sixth, twenty twenty four, four hundred twenty thousand, one hundred ninety three dollars.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there a motion to accept the claims for February the sixth?
Sumo.
Support. All right, uh, motion by Dr. Cora and seconded by Councilman Dabney. Ms. Nylle on the vote.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Pres Bulinsky.
Aye.
And Ms. Maldonard.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Also, I'd like to add for the, uh, City of Michigan City, twenty twenty four Riverboat Statement of Cash Position, Unexpendant Balance, five million, nine hundred thirty eight thousand, five hundred ninety one dollars, fifty three cents.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And in front of, uh, the council members, uh, I explained it to some of them that were here in between the meetings. But anyway, uh, in front of you, uh, there's a, uh, sheet with the A R P A appropriations that were made, uh, from the time we got the sixteen thousand or sixteen million, five hundred forty nine dollars and forty five, uh, to where we're at now. So right now, we have a remaining balance in the, uh, A R P Fund of two million, one hundred nine thousand, seven hundred ninety one dollars and thirty four cents. So that's just to bring all the council members up to speed on what's in that, uh, that in that account. And then in the, uh, other handout that is, uh, by your seat, uh, was the, uh, this, uh, cash balance at the end of twelve, thirty one, twenty three, and what the estimated cash reserve is going to be in those funds at the end of twenty twenty four. And I asked the, uh, city controller to print these out and hand them out to the council members so they have an idea of what the cash balances should be in, in these. And if you have any, uh, questions whatsoever, feel free to give Mary Lynn a, uh, call or to me call and they will explain how all that is, uh, taken care of. Uh, reports from boards and commissions, reports from boards and commissions?
I have a.
Councilwoman Nancy?
I'm sorry. I have a report from the Sustainability Commission this evening. Um, we want to congratulate the N double A C P since they received, um, permission to give certification by the National American Board of Certified Energy Practitioners. Um, this is the highest level of certification for P V installation. And they started their first class this Saturday on February third. And I have been told this is extremely difficult certification to receive. They got it on the first try. So really, thank you to the N double A C P. And Sustainability Commission has been in partnership with them, um, with the I B E W five thirty one, I V Tech, Work One, and Just Transition Northwest Indiana. Um, all of us together wrote the first grant that was ever submitted for this solar power program. So we're creating not only good jobs but high paying jobs, um, for, for residents in our surrounding area. So just thank you to them.
Very nice.
Yes.
Thank you very much for your hard work. Thank you very much for your hard work and effort on that.
Also, I have another announcement to make.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, a grant was submitted on Friday for, um, ninety eight thousand dollars. And that went to the, um, Indiana Office of Energy Development. And we've been consulting with the, um, National Renewable Energy Laboratories for the last couple of years to look at the zoo property and Washington Park property to come up with ways to install either solar arrays or panels to help bring down the cost of electric utilities there. So the next step was actually to be able to hire, um, a firm that would be able to do the assessment and planning for that particular area. So this grant will go directly to, um, planning that, um, second phase for that particular project. When that's completed, then hopefully we'll be able to move into the phase of actually, um, doing installation. And this ties in with those new people that are being trained to actually be solar power assistance installers and designers. So.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Maldonard. Councilman Dabney?
Yep, uh, just a quick clarification, uh, just in a question. These don't require any matching funds from the city, correct?
No matching funds for the city. This actually, we were able to, um, submit with, um, no matching fund whatsoever from anybody. And, um, Councilman Dabney, thank you for bringing that up because if it did require matching funds from the city, then this body as a city council would need to have voted on that. So, um, this is a freebie except we did put in, um, in kind, um, work that was going to be put in by the Sustainability Commission as a in kind match.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, are there any reports, uh, special or select committees? Uh, reports from mayor or other city officers and departments? I know Chief Corley's here, uh, this evening.
Good evening, Board. Um, just wanted to give you some things from Michigan City Police Department. Uh, I wait for stats. Um, we swore in six new officers yesterday here at City Hall. Um, that brings our complement to eighty two, um, which we are allotted for eighty four. So we're two away. Again, thank you to the council for helping us with that, get that going last year with, um, the, uh, I don't want to say stack, the bonuses and other things.
Lit tax.
Yeah, lit tax money to help us, uh, with our recruiting and retention. Uh, with that, with that eighty two, um, we'll have two spots open. We will have a retirement that was already planned, um, next week. So we will be instead of two, three, three away, but we have two possible lateral transfers that we have applications for. We also have five that are in the background stage and we will have a testing February seventeenth at eight A M at the Michigan City Police Department. Anybody interested in, um, applying can go to join mcpd dot com, get the application, get it turned in by the fifteenth, fifteenth of, uh, February and you'll be eligible for the, the testing on the seventeen. Um, and so with that being said, we're hoping to have a, a hiring pool of officer, of candidates ready to, to be, uh, appointed once we have some more, um, openings, which will have some retirements coming up, not too many. But so we're in a really good, uh, position now. So you should see us, uh, our manpower will be up, um. I do ask you all to still be patient with us. We still have to train these officers. So they still have to go to the academy. They're not going to be by theirself right away, but by the summertime, we'll again, our manpower be a lot better. And we're going to be in a better state. Um, also, our January stats, we took, uh, we had three thousand, two hundred fifty eight total calls for service. We took a total of three hundred forty three, uh, incident reports. We had a hundred and sixty seven arrests, which a hundred fifty five been adults and twelve being juveniles. We had thirty four shots fired calls and we seized twelve firearms just in the month of January. Um, and so again, we continue to push forward with, uh, reducing crime and, um, doing the things we need to do to keep this community safe. Um, also, Michigan City Police Department, we just finished up a partnership with I V Tech where we put all of our personnel through what they call a DISC training. Basically, know your personality trait, help you communicate effectively, more effectively with each other. Um, so we're, you know, we just had our whole staff go through that and our goal is to not only have our staff communicate more effectively with each other, but also with the community too. We kind of know what personality trait you are and the people you're talking to, it helps you kind of, you know, not push buttons and, you know, talk to each other and get the information you need the right way. So, um, if there's any questions, I'm here to entertain them. I'm not.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Could you provide a current status on, um, the flock and raven?
As far as?
As far as, um, flags of how many, um, reports have been turned in or cases that has benefited by, um, those two equipment?
I can tell you, we have been compiling those stats here over the last couple of months. We actually, um, I didn't mention, we actually got an intern, um, from the Abolration University who has been helping us compile those stats. Um, I can tell you this, I think without, uh, I don't have official count for it, but that's so far what I've seen. We've had about sixty five instances where flock was used, whether it's for an arrest, um, to identify suspect or continued investigation. Um, when the mayor gives her state of the city and well, I give a report afterwards, I have more accurate numbers for you then, um, but we're using this effectively. Um, it's, it's, uh, helped in a couple of big cases. Um, I don't know if you all saw, there was a, a robbery case that came, um, that happened in flock and utility. Both were used with the license plate readers, not only on our cars, but the stationary ones to, um, to get a suspect. The suspect was taken into custody and evidence was found on a search warrant and been charged. So it's, it's working out for us. Hopefully here, uh, we can get some more, um, if the federal government helps us out.
Okay, any other, uh, questions?
I have a question.
I have a question, President.
Councilman?
With the DISC training, is there a pass or fail rating with this?
No, it's just a training. Again, it's a personnel, it, it just tells you what your trade is. So DISC is, is for, it's for, uh, different things stands for. DISC is dominance. Uh, the I is influential, S is steadiness, and C is conscientiousness. So I'm an influential, I'm an I. So if you know, if you kind of know what it is, you know, I'm an I in that DISC. I'm not a dominant. Some people may think I am, but I'm an I than that. But it just kind of lets you know what your personality traits are and it, um, it's like a, it was a four hour training for us. So we walked, not only did you see what you were, you saw how to interact with others and you saw what those other personalities, traits there, there, there were and how to, again, how to identify those and, and effectively communicate with them. It was very thorough training. For the most part, I think majority of our people enjoyed it. I enjoyed it and it was, uh, me and the other two chiefs went through at the different times. So I was trying to guess what they were. So I went through first and then I went through, I was trying to figure out what they were. So when they came back, I was like, yeah, I figured that. So it was good. I, I, and not only was it good for our people to know what they are, it was also a good way for us to interact with each other because then you have people trying to figure out what the other person was or in class. We were already, once you, you kind of saw, you were already pointing out, yeah, you're a D or you're an I, you're S and so forth. So, um, I think it was a good effective training for us. And again, you'll see a payoff for us as we go further into communicating, not just with each other, but with the community also.
Okay, chief, uh, if you want to find, if not, it's okay if I mention, uh.
All the names?
Yeah, the names of the, uh, new officers, because I know I was here at the swearing in ceremony and, uh, they look very qualified. I know, know they're very proud of, uh, their accomplishments and I know Michigan City is going to be proud of them.
Yeah, if you want, I can.
Go ahead.
Uh, so our new officers are, uh, Brandon Drake, um, Jared Caselka, Leah Henson, uh, Makia Smallwood, Brendan Williams, and, um, Brian Woodman. So if you, you probably won't see him out and about right away. Um, usually how our process works is the first six to eight weeks, they do a lot of in-house training. Um, and then if the academy is not ready for them yet, they will then get out into field training where they'll be with Simon Officer and you see him out in that capacity. So you might get, might get to see him a little bit before they go to the academy, but for sure after they come back because we're hoping to have him in the academy in April and back in time enough for the, uh, second half of the summer to be out and about working. So if you happen to know him or seeing him out, um, there's a couple of, uh, local people who are hometown people in that group that I know for sure. So, um, when we posted it on Facebook, a lot of people was like, that's my cousin and, you know, so. Um, but it's, this is a good group and, um, with this group, um, through, under, uh, Chief Forker's administration, when we started, uh, with this recruiting and retention, um, this will put us back to about twenty three to twenty five officers we hired in the last year and so many months, uh, about four or five months. So, um, we really hustled last year to get us to this point and it's going to pay off for us in the future.
Yep. Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
Yep, and the only, the only comment I have is I do want to thank, uh, the council, the, the past council for putting all the mechanisms in place to make it possible to hire, uh, officers, to give them more pay, give them more benefits. And as a result of that, this is where we're at today. We're only too short of our, uh, quota. So job well done by the, uh, past council. Chief?
How are you all this evening? Um, mine's going to be pretty quick. We don't have much going on. Um, I'll give you our incident breakdown for the month of, uh, January. Um, we had, uh, right here. We had a total number of three hundred seventy eight calls. Four of those were fired. Uh, three hundred and nine were emergency or, or rescue calls and the rest were miscellaneous, you know, hazardous condition service calls. Uh, you know, smoke detectors, stuff like that. Um, out of those three hundred and nine, uh, medical calls, we used Narcan nine times.
Hmm.
So, um, I believe you all got a copy of the, the callers. Um, that's really it for us right now. I do want to announce a, a retirement that we had last week. Uh, driver operator Steve Stimley with thirty three and a half years. Um, we wish him well in retirement.
Mm-hmm.
Been a long time coming and, uh, good luck to him.
Yep.
Other than that, I have nothing else unless you all have any questions.
Was there any injuries in those fires?
No. Anything else?
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Angie.
Good evening, Council and Clerk and Deputy Clerk. And I'll make sure you all get my new cell phone number because I got rid of the old one. So you've been texting me, sorry. It was a long time coming. Um, so I, I wasn't ignoring you. I'm not getting them. So, um, I do want to report, um, we've been having, um, oh, before I forget with the police department, um, they, we do have more officers going through crisis intervention, um, training this week, right? Chief Corinna? Um, nine going through. So, um, this is just a continuation of last year, um, in making sure our officers are trained to respond to mental health crises calls. So, um, we have nine more officers going through that training. And actually, um, a compliment of us, uh, from the La Porte County Drug Free Partnership went to D C, um, for our annual conference. And, uh, just to bring back some more good information on what we can do differently with the opioid money. So we have about four hundred thousand plus dollars that we can use for programming here in Michigan City. And I hope to be able to announce something at the state of the city that we can move forward with some, some programs moving forward into the summer. Um, so tonight, what I really want to talk about is, um, our refuse department and some of the challenges that we've had over the last several weeks. Um, again, uh, all of our departments did a tremendous job, um, in what, uh, was super storm. I call it super storm, uh, snowstorm indigo, um, that impacted, you know, our, our services. But there's a bigger issue that, um, you all need to be aware of with the refuse department. And I, I'm for the sake of transparency, I think you all should know, um, what's been happening and why, uh, the ordinances that we have, um, on the agenda for the five hundred thousand dollars is important. And, and I will be asking it if you could do second, third reading. So Chris Carter is our new refuse superintendent. Uh, he's been on the job since about January, uh, fourth, fifth. Um, and they really haven't had a full-time superintendent since Mr. Jim Kiltz. Um, it's always been somebody in sanitary district working part-time to, to handle refuse, which is kind of been treated like a stepchild in, in my opinion. Um, so our workers have been working, um, mandatory six days a week. Um, when we, when the storm happened, more like seven days a week, ten hour shifts. And, uh, part of that is the council, our council spent money on new trucks that nobody knows how to operate.
Hmm.
Um, so when, when Mr. Carter came into, um, into this position, um, we had several pieces of equipment that were down, that weren't available. Typically, our routes are five garbage trucks per day. And we've been operating on two garbage trucks per day, okay? And, um, first of all, that's, that's horrible, number one, um, that we have all this equipment. But then it's even more alarming that we have two new trucks and only one person has been able to operate the truck. Okay? And, um, I don't know how much we spent last year, million, two million?
Yeah, we spent a million dollars from the A R P Fund to buy four brand new garbage trucks. And if we wouldn't have the A R P Fund, I don't know where we'd be at right now.
Exactly. So, um, this was, this is a week ago. So I'm going to have Mr. Carter kind of give you an update. But when we put this brief together, um, at the time, we were using two diesel trucks to run all the routes plus a garbage truck that's only equipped for street stops and not alleys. Okay, and so then, um, as this is happening, some of these newer trucks are even going down for maintenance. And you know, one of the things that, uh, I've asked, uh, Mr. Carter to do is make sure we can schedule training with either the manufacturer or whoever sold us the vehicles, right? So in March, we'll be training another additional five to six drivers to operate those sidearm. Um, um, I call them pieces of equipment, but they're large tanks in my opinion. Um, so that, number one, we can keep more operating. But we have a bigger problem in making sure that, um, these are maintained, these are C and G.
Hmm.
Um, vehicles that we have to send away. Um, I have Mr. Carter checking into what type of service agreements we have with these. But again, when you don't have a full-time refuse superintendent, um, this is kind of where we've been. Um, I want to thank, if we have refuse people, if they would stand up, uh, our refuse folks that are here because, um, these people are some of our lowest paid people in the city. And they work rain, sleet or snow. And, um, I, I think that, um, it's my responsibility that makes sure, number one, that they're trained, but also that you understand what is happening and that the public understands when we get all the calls and people are calling about their trash. Well, this is part of the issue that we're trying to, to, to fix. So anytime you see an issue like this, I will bring it to the council so that you know, um, because you're going to get phone calls. Um, right now, um, just trash, people are dumping again. And, um, I call it a trash commission, but I'm going to call it the beautific, beautification commission, um, President Privilinski, that I'm going to ask some citizens to participate in so that, um, when we start getting dumping, we need to come up with some different solutions on, uh, how we're going to address it. Um, but we can't continue down this path like we did last spring when spring cleanup help happened. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris so that he can kind of give you an update. This was, um, a week ago that, um, I put this together. So I know he has some other, other updates.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, uh, City Council for giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak to you. Uh, the call is a dilemma. It's about where we are. It's a dilemma that has been mounting for years. Um, when I came in, we had three C and G trucks, two which we use for our day-to-day services. We're picking up in the routes, they were down. Uh, only one of them has come back and we had to send it back into service. Uh, so with the C and G's that we have, that we have, that I have the biggest complaints about, they're seven and ten years old. You know, we're still using them out here and the demand from, that we're putting on them. We're picking up wood, furniture along with the garbage. So when you get to seven years, it's time to start, you know, get phasing them out. We have the sidearm trucks that we're trying to, uh, get drivers trained on using, but we have a staffing issue right now. Uh, one of the drivers that was able to operate the truck, he left. So now we're trying to train guys, like Madam Mayor said, we have a, uh, group coming in next month that's going to, once we figure out the guys, because I want them to feel comfortable. I'll bear the burden of those trucks not being out because I want them to be operated safely. I don't want to put anybody out there that can put the public to risk. So I want to make sure that those drivers are comfortable and safely trained in the operation of those trucks. But the C and G issue is because we don't have certified C and G mechanics. Every vendor we're dealing with only has one. So we get pushed back in the order that you came in, you know? So we're looking at six to four weeks turnover time on these trucks. And that's unacceptable to us from these vendors when these trucks have to be out here in service, you know? So we had the snow, which caused an accumulation of garbage, so we couldn't pick up those first three days when the snowstorm hit. So that garbage accumulated and that's when the trucks started breaking down. So the guys, these refuse guys here have been working feverishly, ten hours a day, six days a week. We had to take two garbage trucks, thirteen years old and fifteen-year-old diesel trucks that need service to go out here and pick up the garbage. We had to take two garbage trucks, thirteen-years-old and fifteen-year-old diesel trucks that need service to go out here and pick up the garbage. These guys have been working around the clock, and they deserve more money for what they've been doing, because they have risen above and beyond the call of duty. They've taken the impossible and made it possible. These guys have given up their time for their families to be out here to serve the public. And I'm gonna tell you, if you think the residents are upset, these guys are upset more than the than the residents are, because they're used to performing at a high level. You know, when somebody says, I can't bring my towder out to the curb, those guys go get it. If somebody car gets stuck, they help them out, even though they tired, because they're they're working as hard as they are. You know, when they're told, this person put out X amount of, uh, furniture and wood and debris, and they go pick it up, and then they put it out again, and then they go pick it up again. You know, they're asked to that. They do whatever is asked of them, because they take pride in being public service. They want to serve this community. They want this community to be clean. They take pride in what they do, because they want the city to be something that they can be proud of. And it is, and it's possible. We're handcuffed right now with what we can do. We handcuff what we want to accomplish, and all we asking is, you know, the solutions. We need to phase out some of this equipment. You know, the CNGs are just difficult trucks to work with. They go down quicker. The diesel trucks hold up a little better, but you know, it's just, I mean, we're gonna get out of this situation. Trust me, I don't accept defeat, and these guys are not gonna accept defeat. If we, if we got one truck, a monkey and a mule, to pull a wagon, these guys are gonna forget it, because they've been using, they've been using pickup trucks to run through the alleys and pick up people garbage. That's how commit, no one is more committed to that than they are. You know, one, one day they pulled thirty-two loads out of a pickup truck, thirty-two loads out of these alleys. You know, so moving forward, we, uh, I've spoken to Mr. Milanovich, the, uh, department down there at sanitation. We're gonna start phasing the street pickup to get away from the alleys. Like I said, we're gonna get the guys trained to work the sidearms so that we can get out here and take less pressure off of the rear end loaders. You know, but right now, the dilemma is, these trucks can break down. We got two of them back. So we're, we're, we're functioning at four trucks, plus the sidearm. But like I said, we got a thirteen and a fifteen-year-old diesel truck that could go down at any time, and we have no replacements for those trucks. So I mean, moving forward, we, we, we have to get some newer trucks. We have to have a replenishment program where we can phase out the older trucks and bring in some newer trucks. And then, even if we get to like, say, a truck gets seven years old, we phase it out. We'll still use it to pick up the furniture and the debris and stuff. We'll have crews out doing that. And then after ten years, phase the truck out completely and bring in some newer ones. That is our goal. That's what we would like to do. So, I mean, but.
And 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 the other thing, and I know, um, Council, uh, Council President, um, Privilinski, I know we've, um, kind of suspended the conversations. We'll need to come back to those conversations on fees, because we know we need a non-reverting fund for capital improvements going forward. These are expensive trucks, and, uh, we just want to make sure that we have a long-term solution, you know, moving forward. So once we get through this, this, hopefully no more s- snowstorms, that we can, uh, maybe sit back down and get, um, our refuse superintendent engaged and start having that conversation again. Um, any questions for us?
Council Dabney?
Miss Mayor.
Dabney, go ahead.
And you mentioned non-reverting funds. Could you explain for the public, non-reverting fund and how it works?
So, so just like with, uh, with any department, if there is a, um, they're receiving any types of fees, we can put it in a restrictive fund that it can only be used for certain things that we decide that fund is for. So we can come, come up with a refuse non-reverting fund. If we decide to do pickups and all of that, we should be making money off of that, and that should go into this fund. If we're, uh, writing fines or whatever that might be, um, money would be collected into that, into that, um, that fund that we can use and plan for future, um, capital purchases, for the most part.
Perfect, thank you. And I have a another comment. It is refreshing to hear you, uh, Mr. Carter and Mayor, come up here and give your crew and talk about the the hard work that they're putting in and that you're proud of them and to let us know what we're gonna be looking at in terms of helping you all out. Uh, so I really appreciate that. That was a breath of fresh air for you to, you know, to stand up and and talk about the good that your guys are doing and how hard they're working. So I appreciate that, and I hope that the people in the public that are watching that appreciates that as well. That was a breath of fresh air. I mean, I smiled through the whole thing when you were talking, and, um, so I'm happy to hear that. Thank you, guys.
Ms. Carter, is this all you need, or is there more? I'm saying that because.
Don't do that. I got other departments that have these too. Um, well, just, that's just they keep it there.
And and I'm saying that to say sadly.
Yeah.
I wish that this was brought forth in detail the way that it's being presented now, because, no, it probably would not have, but now we can move forward and get the equipment and the things that is needed in order for your department to carry out their, um.
Thank you.
duties and responsibilities in the city. And not only that, we're, if we approve this, I'm just gonna say this to all the residents, we have to play our part too. Garbage cans, put them where they belong, so that the, uh, dump trucks and everything can get through the alley, alleyways, so that they can do their jobs. We have to help out just as well, so.
And let me add, we're not asking for any capital, um, expenditures right now. I I have a riverboat issue that we're gonna all be dealing with in the next couple of months. But what I am saying is I want the public to know what has happened with the seven trucks that we have, that they have not been running. And and part of that is, um, making sure that all our, all of our folks are trained to to run this equipment. Um, and then we have to take a look at, and he's accumulating all the maintenance costs that, you know, we've been, uh, we've been having, so that we can get a true, if, if, if the maintenance costs come in at a certain amount that we've been spending, then of course, maybe it makes sense, you know? But at this time, I'm not, I'm not making a request for any type of capital expense for trucks. I, I want to make sure they know how to use the ones we have first, and that, um, I think training will cut a lot of these expenses too, um, that we're seeing on maintenance. Training can save a lot when it comes to maintenance, if we're using the equipment properly. And I think, um, that, you know, right now, everybody's just trying to do the best they can, which is, that's good. But it's not the best solution. The best solution is making sure they're highly trained and qualified to do the work.
I just have one other question. Uh, Ms. Carter, you mentioned that, um, staffing, so are you saying that there are openings?
Yes, Madam Councilman.
Can I ask how many?
Um, I'll probably have a couple more, because if we get into spring cleanup, I'm gonna be looking for drivers. I hired one driver this week, and as we've approached spring, I'm looking to hire at least two more. Maybe we'll see. We have to assess the situation more.
And for those positions, do they need CDLs?
Yes, ma'am, at the very minimum, a, a Class B CDL.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Another comments from Councilpeople. I just have a couple of comments, and I want to thank all the refuse.
Council.
Okay, I just want to thank all the, uh, refuse workers that are here tonight and that are not here tonight, might be watching the, uh, council meeting for all your hard work and effort, uh, going through this storm, just working on a normal day-to-day basis and trying to deal with this equipment. And I've known, I've known about this equipment, and I know the mayor has too, uh, for a while. Uh, and it always boggled my mind of why the city or the sanitary district would buy equipment when you don't have mechanics that can work on it. Anytime it goes down, you have to haul it, I don't know, South Bend or wherever these trucks are going to, and we're, and we're paying premium price to get this stuff repaired, when maybe they should talk to the maintenance supervisor on, who works for the city, to say, hey, what are the best trucks that we should buy? Not just be going on what a superintendent wants to buy, because he thinks it's better because of this or because of that. You know, all the time, and I, and I know that we're trying to look out for, you know, everything to be perfect, but sometimes you don't have to buy, you can't buy the perfect item. You gotta buy maybe what this item here is and how it works best for what your situation is. So moving forward, I hope that the city takes into consideration the maintenance supervisors' take on what he thinks the best equipment is, and maybe what the overall industries take is and opinion is on garbage trucks, refuse trucks. All right, that being said, moving on, uh, that's it for department heads, I believe. Any other department heads want to speak this evening? Having none, uh, Madam Clerk, are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Any communications?
No correspondence was received.
Pardon?
No correspondence was received.
Okay, thank you. And resolutions this evening?
A resolution by title only, a resolution supporting the waiver of building permit inspection fees charged by the Michigan City Plan Commission and the Michigan City Planning and Inspection Department for one zero zero five West Eighth Street, and this is introduced by Mr. Nelson and Mr. Coulter.
Do the sponsors have anything they'd like to add?
Uh, so the first thing I really just want to say before we read through it, do we read through it now, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, if you'd like to read it verbatim, you can do that.
All right, so a resolution supporting the waiver of building permit and inspection fees charged by the Michigan City Plan Commission and the Michigan City Planning and Inspection Department for one oh five West, one thousand five West Eighth Street. Whereas Michigan City Common Council has given support for Citizens Concerned for the Homeless Incorporated, CCH, and its program Sandcastle Shelter for the homeless families, Keys for Hope Community Resource Center, Grace Learning Center, and CCH's Food Rescue Initiatives and its thirty-two years of service in Michigan City. And whereas the Sandcaster Shelter Program provides emergency residential housing thirty to sixty days for families primarily consisting of single mothers and their children, the program also empowers families through case management classes, workshops, and resource referral to provide them tools and skills to graduate to housing and sustainable self-sufficiently, self-sufficiency. And whereas CCH is a nonprofit corporation that works in partnership with community partners, including the Michigan City Housing Authority, housing opportunities, and local landlords to find affordable housing for Sandcastle Shelter graduates. And whereas CCH's Grace Learning Center offers classes and workshops to assist Grace, to assist Sandcastle Shelter participants, address barriers including mental health, substance abuse, work readiness, nurturing parenting, banking, budgeting, and credit repair, and general health envelops. And whereas CCH wishes to have the city lessen the financial burden for CCH by waiving all fees and costs associated with permits and inspection through the renovation from January twenty twenty-four to the completion of the project in the summer of twenty twenty-four for the facility located at one zero zero five West Eighth Street in Michigan City, Indiana. Whereas after inspection, the city has advised CCH that the building permit has a fee of two thousand two hundred seventy-two dollars and zero cents, with additional inspections not to exceed five hundred dollars, for a total not to exceed waiver amount of three thousand dollars. And whereas the Michigan City Common Council have considered the request, has determined that the waiving of the permit and inspection fees will encourage and assist CCH in serving the homeless families of Michigan City in their journey and permanent housing, journey to permanent housing, excuse me, and sustainable self-sufficiency, creating a net benefit to the city of Michigan City, Indiana. Now therefore be resolved that this Common Council of Michigan City, Indiana respectfully requests that the Michigan City Plan Commission, Planning and Inspection Department waive all fees for the continuing renovation of Sandcastle Shelter for homeless families located at one thousand five West Eighth Street, Michigan City. So just to say that in two words, um, we're asking to waive the Citizens Concerned for the Homeless, their, uh, fees not to exceed three thousand dollars, and that's work being done to house, uh, homeless families.
Thank you, Councilman Coulter. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this resolution?
Hi, Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Now, this is why I really envy you council members, is you get to, you know, these fulfilling things like this, that you get to do like waiving for the permit fees and the inspection fees for this, for the Sandcastle Shelter for the homeless. And that's just why I want to say, that's why I wish I could have been a council member one day, so I could do these things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public who should speak on this resolution?
Evening, everyone. My name is Jim Musial. I'm the Executive Director of Citizens Concerned for the Homeless, and I've been asked to come here tonight to either explain the programs that we run, talk about the renovation, or to answer any of your questions generally.
What will the renovations include?
This is phase two of the renovation. Sandcastle Shelter for Homeless Families is the rectory, the old rectory of Sacred Hearts Church over on West Street. It's about a hundred and ten years old. Uh, last summer, we did the exterior renovation, phase one, which is a little over two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, put a new flat roof. We put a hundred thousand dollars with a tuck pointing in its two-story brick building. Um, we built a new, a concrete driveway for the Grace Learning Center, a new pad on the back, and we expanded to green space in the backyard for the children's play area by twenty-five percent. Now comes the difficult part. This phase, phase two, is the interior. Um, we have five primary contractors that are coming in. We're gonna do a total upgrade to all electrical. Um, we're redoing all of the plumbing, all the plumbing lines, all the fixtures. We're gutting all the bathrooms, the kitchen. We're redoing all of that. Uh, we're refinishing all of the original woodwork and floors. Uh, the project for the interior right now stands at about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Um, we've received community support. We have a match grant from Healthcare Foundation of La Porte. Um, we're at thirty-one, or I'm sorry, we're at thirty-seven thousand to the fifty thousand match with three months to go. Uh, we have no doubt we're gonna reach that. We've received funds from ARPA for this. We've received funds from ForSource Foundation, uh, Barker Welfare Foundation, Unity Foundation, uh, the list goes on and on. So it's a really extreme project. We just recently added thirty-six new windows to the project. Uh, there's a new eighty, you may have heard about this, the eighty-eight million dollars that's coming into our community, or into the state uh, for capital improvement projects. And so, um, I've been working with Rachel Lee in Indianapolis, who runs Indiana United Way. Um, our application is set and ready to go. We're asking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we had a conference, uh, with Zoom meeting today. She's going to her committee, and, uh, she's pretty sure that we're gonna get all of that money. Um, and that'll allow us to complete the building. So inside now, it's gonna be like a brand-new building. It's serves the public, it is, versus a rectory, uh, now it's a homeless shelter. Um, and we're hoping it'll stand for decades to come.
Last question. On any given night, how many people do you house?
Depends, depends on family sizes. We have, uh, seven rooms for families. Uh, we average usually about thirty to thirty-five families a year. We average between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty individuals a year. Um, so it really depends on family size. We have large rooms, we have small rooms. When we have room, we'll take single women as well, without children or spouse. I'm proud to report that last year, seventy-seven percent of our families graduated to permanent housing. Um, that's an incredibly high number for this type of facility, and that's due, in fact, to a number of factors. Number one, the Grace Learning Center, our active case management, setting up specific plans for each of the family heads, so they can get back on their feet to sustainable self-sufficiency, as, uh, was described in the resolution. And, uh, with the community partners that we have across, we have over a hundred community partners that we work with through our four programs. Besides Sandcastle, we got Grace Learning, Keys to Hope, and the Food Rescue Initiative. So, uh, we're very blessed to live in this community. We have a good relationship with, uh, with the city. Uh, we received ARPA grants for both phase one and phase two, for which we're very appreciative of that. Um, but on an average nights, we could have anywhere between twenty-five to thirty-five people.
The other questions?
I, yeah, I just want to thank you and the members of the team for all, all the work that you do. I had an opportunity to visit your facility, especially during the COVID times, and, um, thanks for all your efforts.
Well, thank you, Dr. Paul.
Mr. President.
Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, um, you know, down in the end of the resolution, it talks about, um, requesting that the Michigan City Plan Commission on the Plan and Inspection Department, were those two departments spoken with regarding this?
I know Sue Downs pretty well, and I knew that this was going to be a very big project, so I invited Sue to come over to Sandcastle, and I walked her through the entire facility. Um, showed her exactly what we're gonna do and what areas, top to bottom. As a matter of fact, it was her idea for the resolution.
Okay.
And then I met with um, our new councilman from the third board, um, Mr. Nelson and uh, Greg Coulter.
And I see Skyler coming down. And another, maybe a suggestion. Um, that I was thinking about because you know, when you do something like this where you waive some kind of fees for one entity. That could open the door for others to come. And maybe we need to do something to say, well, we can do this for not-for-profits or whatever it may be to kind of insulate ourselves from. Brian Dabney coming down here and say, can you waive the fees for me in my house? Well, you did it for them. You know what I'm talking about? Something that we can do to insulate ourselves from that. Like I said, maybe we could do it for not-for-profits or you know, something of that sort. Uh, but I'm in favor of this, but uh, just some thoughts there.
Yeah, good afternoon, Council. Uh, Scott York, Director of Planning. Uh, I spoke to Mr. Miss, uh, Miss Sue Down, sorry, Miss Sue Downs about this. Uh, I believe we spoke months ago and I'm, I'm familiar with. The programs they uh, run there, I believe. I was running BZA when Cyber Heart was approved, things of that nature. Um, they run a really good, they, they provide a service to our community and our community members, and I feel like that's a little different than. It's very different from other nonprofits who are well-funded, um, but they also are providing a direct service and uh, to our community members and. Um, you, you know, it's, it's, it's a couple thousand dollars. It's really not. A, a, a significant amount of money. It's not insignificant as either, but um, but I do also think that. You just heard the list of all the other people that are involved and all the other money that he has rounded up. Um. This could be considered another contribution to that, so. It's kind of how I look at it from a fiscal standpoint.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Um. I understand uh, what Councilman Dabney was saying in regards to. Um, can any other not-for-profit or any other entity come and request this? Well. We've already set precedence because we've done it before, uh, for something similar and. I would also like to make a motion to accept this resolution.
Second.
Well, we're not done with public comment.
Want to back in council comment?
Oh, yeah, that's why this gentleman's here. I never said. Council comment.
Well, my apologies.
Okay, anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this?
Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. Like she spoke, you have done in the past and. It's, it's, it's for a good cause. If it'll get these people off the streets and, and help people that need help, it's for a good cause and. I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Paul Prespolinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. As to the concerns of setting a precedent. As a long-term member of the city council, we already have. And we have granted several of these waivers to not-for-profits. And as far as I can remember, no private businesses or. Anything of that nature or a private citizen has always been a not-for-profit. I don't think we have to have anything written in there. As Councilwoman Tracy Tillman alluded, the precedent has already been set. Thank you, and I am in support of this. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? If you wish to speak, sir, you can go to the microphone there or the microphone here. Okay, thank you. Okay, public comment is now closed? No, no, this is public comment on this resolution. Yeah, okay. Alright, uh. Public comment being closed. Are there any comments from the council?
Uh, Mr. President, I would be like to, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please add Councilwoman Daisy Lee as a co-sponsor. Anybody else wish to be added as a co-sponsor?
Mr. President, I would like to be.
And also add Councilwoman Nancy Mullenhour.
And I'd like to be added.
And also add Dr. Vijakara. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
There's a motion to approve by Councilwoman Tillman and seconded by Councilman Dabney. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
Pardon?
Who seconded?
I did.
Councilman Dabney.
Thank you. Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
And Dr. Cora?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you very much. We're done with resolutions. Madam Clerk, our first ordinance on second reading this evening?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending ordinance number four seven oh seven, commonly known. As a twenty twenty-four salary ordinance to create the position of undergraduate and graduate municipal interns, and this is introduced by Mr. Prespolinski and Mr. Dabney.
And do the sponsors have anything they'd like to add at this time?
I don't.
Okay, anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council comments? Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Um, Mr. President, I thought I had been asked to be added on as a, um, as a sponsor on this ordinance. Is it possible to still be added on, sir?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Be added on third, second reading, first reading, second reading, third reading. Okay. Alright, any other council comments? Any other council comments? Having none, this ordinance will be heard over, held over till third reading at our next council meeting. Madam Clerk, our next ordinance on second reading, please.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Corona. Virus Local Physical Recovery Fund for the ninth addition to the initial. Plan for use of portion of the city allotment of local physical recovery funds. Through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies to rate the workforce development and retention program. And this is introduced by Mr. Prespolinski, Mr. Dabney and Ms. Lee.
And do the sponsors have anything they would like to add at this time? Uh, I would like to make a uh, motion because I believe the mayor was asking for it. That this ordinance be uh, have second and third reading this evening. So with that being said, uh, I made the motion. We need a second. Councilwoman Tracy Tillman made a second and Ms. Nylup on the vote?
May I be added as a sponsor, please, Mr. President?
Pardon?
May I be added as a sponsor, please, Mr. President?
Sure. Also add Councilwoman Nancy Mullenhour as a sponsor.
Okay, we'll take the vote on.
Yes.
Second and third reading. Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, so go ahead and read the ordinance on the second reading.
Um, I already read it on second. You need to do formal public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, third reading, moving on to third reading?
You have to have the formal public hearing on second reading.
Oh, yeah. Okay, uh, at this time, we will have a formal public hearing. Cause what, cause what we're doing, we're spending five hundred thousand dollars and anytime you're spending money, you have to have a. Public hearing. So at this time, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance?
Sure, um, uh, Council President, Council, um, thank you for doing second and third reading this evening. So this money is for. Um, two things, um. The first thing that is uh, more of an urgent nature. Um, is that we want to roll out the um, internship program for this year, this Leadership Development Program. Um, we're uh, our uh, Director of Workforce and Education. She has put together. Uh, and we'll make sure you get those, those items, but. Uh, a document for a department head to fill out on um, current issues that they, they see within a department that an intern could help. Um, we've kind of given some examples, um, and then we already have set the date for the fair. In March, that will be here that, here held at city council. Um, what she did is she went and contacted all of the Indiana schools to find out when their, their spring break was. Um, so that we could find a comparable date that students will possibly be home. Um, so that they would be able to come in and meet with a different department head. Um, and understand what projects that they're gonna be offering um, to these um, students. So. Um, that will be kind of the initial um, phase of understanding, you know. What students will apply for it, and then if we need to do another fair after they get through a finals to, to fill some more positions. Um, the second piece of that, um, the training piece that I was talking about with the employees. So you heard um, Chief Corley talked about um, some training they did with their staff. Um, we, we have some. Leadership training that needs to be had with some of our, our leaders on crucial conversations with their employees. Things like that, but we also want those manufacturers to come in. So we have to pay for it out of that money. Um, so uh, that's what the money is for, is for training for our employees, for. Um, and then for um, this two-year pilot for the internship program.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance? Okay, uh, public. Public uh, portion is now closed. Uh, the financial hearing has been done and Ms. Nylup. Moving on, is, are there any council comments? Any council comments on second reading? Okay, moving on to third reading?
An ordinance.
By title only?
An ordinance on their reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Coronavirus. Local Physical Recovery Fund for the ninth addition to the initial. Plan for use of a portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan. Act to allocate monies to create workforce development and retention program. And this is introduced by Mr. Prespolinski, Mr. Dabney, Ms. Lee and Ms. Mullenhour.
And do the sponsors have anything they'd like to add at this time? None? Anyone from the public which to speak on this ordinance?
Good evening, Council. Scott, uh, Scott Mellon from two hundred Kenwood. Uh, half a million bucks sounds like a lot of money. How many uh, employees would receive training? For example, what's the cost of, uh, do, do, do the interns have a, uh, an hourly uh, pay scale? I mean. Do they get any benefits? I mean, half a million dollars is a lot. It sounds like you could buy a garbage truck, for example, or pay for a CNG mechanic. How many, how much training are we gonna get for, for this two-year half a million dollars? Thank you.
Five hundred thousand dollars for five hundred employees is not a lot of money. So um, for the internship program, it's a hundred seventy-five thousand of the five hundred thousand dollars. Um, undergraduates will make seventeen to twenty dollars an hour. And then uh, graduate students were nineteen to twenty-one, twenty-two, nineteen to twenty-two dollars an hour. For two-year pilot, um, but the remaining of the money. Um, is for uh, training for employees, and this is for this year and next year. But for five hundred employees, that's not a whole lot of money.
Yeah, and, and just to add to that, the undergraduate interns are gonna be making seventeen to twenty dollars. And then the graduate interns will be making nineteen to twenty-two dollars. And I don't think there's a benefit package included in that, so that's the hourly wage that they're gonna be making. Okay? Alright, any other uh, comments from the public? Having none, any other comments from the council?
Oh, somebody want to comment? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. President, you know, I was looking at, at the, the list that you provided this evening of all the. Uh, the different, uh, the monies that have been appropriated from the ARPA uh, funds, uh, that has helped the police. Um, the street department and for upgrading their equipment and training programs and. Um, it, it, it is absolutely uh, amazing as to all the uh, good things that have happened uh. Uh, because of the ARPA. So I, I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank our Congressman Frank Moran. Uh, for uh, helping us uh, get this money, uh, because um, through, with this um. Um, allocation from the federal government, we have been able to accomplish a lot of things and I want to publicly thank him for that.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? Is there a motion to approve? Motion. Motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilman Cora, Ms. Nylup on the vote?
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, and Ms. Nylup, our final ordinance of the night on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending various sections of the Michigan City Municipal Code to reflect. That documents for the Michigan City Board of Public Works and Safety need to be filed with the clerk for said board. As appointed by the mayor, and this is introduced by Mr. Prespolinski and uh, Dr. Cora.
And do the sponsors have anything that they would like to add this evening? Uh, yeah, Madam Clerk, I would like to have second and third readings. On this uh, ordinance this evening. And. I made the motion, we need a second. If we want to do that. Okay, so there's been a motion by Councilman Prespolinski and seconded by Dr. Cora. To have second and third readings this evening. Madam Clerk on the vote?
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Mullenhour?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. If you would, by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending various sections. In the Michigan City Municipal Code to reflect that documents for the Michigan City Board of Public Works and Safety need to be filed with the clerk. For said board as appointed by the mayor, and this is introduced by Mr. Prespolinski and Dr. Cora.
And I don't have anything to add. Doctor, do you have anything to add? Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone in the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Yes, thank you. Scott Mellon, two hundred Kenwood Place. Um. I actually have some concerns with this. I've read the law and I understand the law does say that uh, class two cities. The mayor will appoint the, the board of three to five, three or five people and a clerk. So I think this brings up. Um, a bigger issue that we don't meet the qualifications of a class two city. Uh, particularly since that's a population of thirty-five thousand people. And when we lose the prison, I believe those two thousand odd people go into that population count. So our population is gonna be quite dramatically below that classification. I don't know the difference between a tier three and a tier two. I don't know if this burdens us with a. A larger form of government, a more costly form of government. That we're being, that we are holding on to. The other concern I have is the current clerk who is doing this is an elected official. This proposed ordinance is all mayoral appointees, the three, the three board members and an assistant out of the mayor's office. It seems that there's very little oversight in. It seems that there's very little oversight in that arrangement, though that is what the law allows for. Um, but it, it seems a concern because effectively now the Board of Works becomes a peepdom of the mayor's office and with no oversight. And I don't know, I don't, that's just, I, I'm a little concerned with that. I don't know where to leave that. So those are, those are my concerns.
Okay.
Um, but the bigger question is, I think, the form of government we have. Do we have a more costly form of government that we're sticking to, that we don't qualify for? Um, if your population falls below the limit, it's good for ten years. We haven't had that population in decades. So I don't know what kind of liability that brings up. I, I, I think it opens a can of worms, probably, but it's something this council should be aware of and maybe should take a look at. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, Tommy Kalovic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, just responding, Scott Mellon. Now, cities don't transition, uh, down from the city of the second class or the city of the third class, which is the city with a population of thirty-four thousand or more. I know we had thirty-four thousand back in the seventies and eighties. I know we hadn't had that in quite some time, but you know, if we do that, we'd have to pretty much reform our entire form of municipal government. You have to go down to seven council members. We have to combine the clerks and the, and the, and the controller's office. Should be the, 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 the clerk treasurer, uh, the mayor would have to serve as the president of the city council. Uh, we'd lose, uh, money in CBG funding. Uh, I know there's two other, besides Michigan City, there's two other city. I actually had a conversation with Mayor Oberly about this when he was in office. Besides Michigan City, there's two other cities in the state that, that are almost our sister cities that, that, that has the population of a city of the third class, and that would be East Chicago, Indiana, and Marion, Indiana. So we're always going to be a city of the second class. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public wish to speak on this? Anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none? Is there, uh, any council comments? Any council comments? Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve.
Aye.
Sir, a second? Dr. Cora, motion to approve by Councilwoman Tillman and seconded by Dr. Cora. Madam, uh, Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Moldauer.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, moving along, under new business, uh, FYI, uh, President Preszbalinski advised the council that we have one appointment to the community enrichment. Uh, the incumbent is Kenneth Flye, and his term expires on March thirty-first. So at the next meeting, we'll be voting on that and, and pardon? Pardon? No, at the next one, I think we'd be taking a vote, right?
No.
Nominations? Okay, we'll be taking nominations at the next meeting and then voting after that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
To submit a nomination, it's the same process, um, putting out the paperwork.
I do, I do have several applications that I received.
Okay, at the next meeting, we'll take, uh, nominations. Uh, moving down to unfinished business, the council has one appointment to the Animal Control Board representing the Humane Society. The incumbent is Karen Edwards, whose term expires next week, February the fifteenth. So are there any nominations for the Animal Control Board at this time?
We did not receive a letter from the Humane Society.
Okay, so we haven't received any letters. So the nomination process will stay open until we get nominations. So if you can think of anybody that might be a good candidate to serve on the Animal Control Board, tell them to go see the clerk and fill out the paperwork, and we'll get their names on the, uh, agenda. Moving forward to nominations for the, uh, council has four appointments to the Michigan City Social Status African-American Males Commission, representing the following, and these will expire February the fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, the Human Rights Pastor Carol, uh, has one, has a one-year term, and they did receive a letter, correct? Ms. Nylup, okay, thank you. Uh, the Michigan City Area Schools, that's a two-year term, but we haven't received any letters for that nomination. And the Minority Health Coalition Pastor Robert Johnson, which is a one-year term. We received, uh, his letter, so that's taken care of. And the Common Council appointment, which is a two-year term, we don't have that taken care of. So we still have to receive a letter on that for anybody that's interested, correct? That's the way I understand. Okay. So if there is anyone in the public, because I hate to have these pardon?
These are motion on the minority health and, um, you know, the human rights.
Oh, okay. So the minority health and the human rights.
Mr. President, I make a motion, uh, to appoint Pastor Dennis Carroll, uh, from the Human Rights and Pastor Robert Johnson for minority health to, uh, the Commission on, Michigan City Commission on Social Status of the African-American Males.
Madam Clerk, go ahead.
You received, uh, a letter yesterday, uh, from the NAACP, um, appointing, um
Mike?
Mike, yeah, Jones. So all three of those need to be voted on.
I'll add, uh, Mr. Mike Jones from the NAACP.
Okay, but on the agenda, I don't see anything for the NAACP.
It, it's not on there because we hadn't received it.
Pardon?
We did not receive it until Friday, or till Monday.
Okay, okay, all right.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to add that to the current agenda, and then we will
Yeah, as long, as long as the president wants to, you know, have the council vote on it. So there's a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, and there's a second, and for, uh, Mr. Michael Jones for the NAACP nomination be added to the agenda for, uh, this evening. Okay, uh, let's, uh, vote. We can vote on them as a group, or we can vote on them as one. What does the council wish to do?
Vote on this group.
One vote? Okay, we will, uh, Madam Chairman, well, it'll be Mr. President. And, okay, everyone in favor of voting these three individuals into the appointed, uh, slots, seconded by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone rejected? Okay, these three individuals are, uh, appointed to Pastor Dennis Carroll, Human Rights, Pastor Robert Johnson, Minority Health, and Mr. Mike Jones for the NAACP. And all we're needing then is the Michigan City Area Schools for a two-year term for somebody to be nominated for that and to receive a letter for that. Okay?
And the Common Council too.
Okay. And the Common Council has four appointments to the social status, so all right, if four people are interested in being appointed to that, then they have to get the letters in to the clerk.
The council, I know, but that's the council appointment, which will be done after we
Oh, okay. Yeah. All right. Okay, moving on. Comments from the public. Comments from the public. Hold on, sir. Okay, under public comment, it's a three-minute time period, and everybody has three minutes to say what they'd like to say, and
Green means your time has started. Yellow means you have seventy-five seconds left, and then when the red comes on, that's when three minutes is over. Okay.
Madam Parliamentarian? I don't want to use that. I don't, I don't want, no, we're not using stop, stop clocks or nothing. Just when there's fifteen seconds left, you can hold up your hand, and that's time to summarize. Okay? The Parliamentarian will be keeping time, so when you start to speak, and you just talk directly to the, uh, you know, to the president, and during public comment, it is public comment. It's not comment for the council to interact with whatever the individual has to say, just to keep things in orderly fashion. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalovic from thirteen sixteen Ohio, Ohio Street. First of all, I think we'd all be remiss if we didn't wish everybody a happy Black History Month, you know, February's Black History Month. Secondly, I want to congratulate the Michigan City Marquette Girls Basketball Team. They won their sectional Saturday. They're going to be taking on, uh, the Morgan Township Cherokees in the regional on Saturday. That happens to be Attorney Nicholas Snow's alma mater, I, I know. That's, yeah, so I want to remind everybody, in March, we're good, Michigan City High School's going to begin hosting the HSA Boys Basketball Regionals and Semi-State. Very, very big event, especially the semi-state. We had last year, we're going to have it again this year, hopefully we get to have that every year. It, it was just off the chain last year. Uh, you know, there's nothing better, I like better than, than when our teams, our Michigan City High School or Marquette, our schools make a deep run in that tournament, you know, especially when the whole city gets behind it. Every community does that, and we're no exception. I want to make a public service announcement with the Jerry Carson, twentieth annual Jerry Carson's Chili Cook-Off Scholarship Cook-Off will be on February seventeenth, noon to three at the, uh, it's, it was the White Eagle Park, it's now the Musage nine eighty on, on, I think it's on Wellness Road in Trail Creek, and it'll be five dollars to have the chili. It's always a great event every year, I've been to it every year. Uh, my favorite chili is always the Fish and Game Club and the Exchange Club. That's actually the Lady John Sheetz chili recipe. Uh, so it's a great fellowship, all the service clubs, and they vote on the best chili. I want to give an update on our, uh, gentleman named Brayden Fesk. He's two thousand eighteen graduate from Michigan City High School. He just finished playing college football for, uh, Florida State University. Just played a stellar game in the College All-Star Game in Mobile, Alabama Saturday. He's going to be competing in the NFL Combine at Lucas Oil Stadium in Indianapolis the weekend of the twenty-ninth. The NFL Draft is going to be in April, and he's expected, they, they reported, say he's going to go in the second round. His name's going to be called on the second day of this. I think the Cleveland Browns are really interested in him. Uh, he's six foot five, three hundred and twenty pounds, big, big man. I enjoyed attending the coffee with the mayor this morning. She gave a lot of great information. I'm looking forward to her, her mayor's ball. I, uh, actually had a conversation last fall with Mayor Amir. He said in the eight years he was the mayor, he raised two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for our nonprofits. I think Mayor, actually, she's going to blow that away. She says she's already got twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, donation for her mayor's ball. She's gonna, she's, her goal's fifty thousand, and, uh, so she's going to do it a little differently. Instead of just naming the nonprofit, she's going to have the nonprofit supply for the funds, kind of like we do with the Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation. She also said her mayor's ball is going to be more geared toward the city, but the city golf outing, which they have every year, is going to be more geared toward the city employees. Uh, she's going to give her state of the city address. She's going to have the Stan Holcrafts, uh, complex at Elston. I also want to, okay, I just want to say, I know the work on the band shells, uh, starting off five hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty for the, and that, that's, uh, it's like to maybe have Fred and Biden, President Obama come before the convention, like President Clinton did in ninety-six come. Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy.
Very informative.
Ernie Hallahan, three oh two Gladys Street. I did have a couple of things. I, I haven't been here a few meetings, I was sick, so I couldn't make it. I didn't want to infect any of you people. But, uh, I need to express something that's in my heart, that really got, got to me, those little kids that burned up in that house over there in South Bend. That, that was sad, that, they have that inspection. The house was inspected, the house was con, shot down on the inspection, and they still rented it out to these people. And according to the news, there was only one, one outlet working in the house. Hmm, so that, that is really sad. When you have something on the books like that, and they're still lose all the little kids like that. Mm-hmm. The father was the only one got out. I, that really, it really hurt to hear that. They did get one out, but she, she passed away at the burn center. So I just wanted to touch on that because inspections don't work for them either, evidently over there, because they have it. And it, it didn't work for those poor kids. But, uh, I was at the Board of Works yesterday, and I did bring up some of the issues of potholes around town. Mr. Minix, uh, wants me to go around with him and show him the ones, when he calls me, I gave him my phone number. So hopefully we can get some of those squared away and straightened out because there's issues as far as the railroad tracks. I, I, I've complained to many people about that. Mr. Preszbalinski's complained. Him and I have been working on that, but we can't get nothing done with the railroad. They, they don't, they don't fix nothing. That one on Jackson Street is terrible. Somebody's going to tear their vehicle up on that one eventually. But anyway, as soon as Mr. Minix gets ahold of me, I will take him around and show him some of the bad spots around town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie.
Paul Preszbalinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street, former long-term city councilperson and neighborhood activist and other kind of activists, all right? Environmental also. Um, for a point of, uh, discussion, I have some points that I wanted to bring up that were brought up tonight by the sanitary district. So before I start my comments, I would ask the chair for an additional three minutes because I think these, um, comments and discussion points that I have are very critical, uh, to the discussions that went on tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, the, the first point I would like to get into is what Mr. Carter brought up about the Refuge Department. Is Mr. Carter still here? Oh, he is, okay. Well, for FYI, that, what we get into when we get a CNG truck, maybe he can clarify for thi, this for me, that I was told that they had a ten-yard dump truck that was a CNG truck that was a grant, and you know what they, and it was in still good shape when they were getting rid of it, and you know what? You know what they had to do with that truck? Under the conditions of the grant? They had to cut it up. They had to get rid of it. They couldn't give it to another department. A ten-yard flatbed dump. Now, I don't know what the conditions are with the, uh, CNG one-armed bandits that they got, but I'm going to tell the council right now. I'm remiss that I didn't know that they were going to buy those trucks with that money, or if they, if they did, or they were previously bought because of the fact of whatever, if they got grant money, and it says that they have to get rid of those trucks and take them out of commission, because they can get efficient, clean diesel trucks to run that won't give you any problems, and that the, um, our, our central maintenance division should be able to work on them. That's FYI for you guys. Also, I hope in the future, when you allocate money from ARP, that you look at one thing and one thing only, that that money goes to neighborhood sewer projects, or at least the start of studies, not a re-study, but the implementation of a project. Because you could do a lot of work with two million dollars. Cause you could do a lot of work with two million dollars and have additional money to it because I think it's imperative that the infrastructure and the sewer systems are addressed. And what I, what I'm getting at is this, the Lafayette Barker Sewer Project. I'm not saying that it's, uh, it, it can be, uh, at the scale that they want, wanted to implement under the study, but that alternatives can be done. And we need to, and we need as a city to do something besides allocating money to repair, to repair people's, uh, infrastructure when they have a problem. People need new taps, sewers need to be rerouted in alleys. And, um, so they're more maintenance, uh, free, that you're not digging up the streets. We also need to look at a maintenance repair program for when uh, contractors cut our streets. Because you can go down Franklin Street right now and there's a bunch of cuts in the midtown district that have fallen apart. There's cuts all over this town and it's a shame. So now my other point is that to the president of the city council, I hope that he would reactivate his, um, concern about having a city crime map made available and readable on our city website. So people know what's going on in their neighborhoods. I think that's imperative. Um, also the snow ordinance needs to be revisited. So I live on a thoroughfare that the main street's Washington Street. The side street is a, uh, barely a two-lane brick street. So now we don't, we cannot for me, and I discussed this with my councilman-at-large, Don Preswellinski, does it make any sense to clear a snow route? And you have at least some time to get your sc- your car undug out of one side and then on the even day, and then you got to move it for the uneven day. So you got to dig out the other side of the street. And then the city comes through and puts you a shoulder in there about sixty-eight inches deep. I want to tell you right now, I spent with my son over six hours digging out my brother, a seventy-four, seventy-four-year-old Vietnam War veteran, highly decorated. And I'm, I'm thinking to myself, how are other people doing this? And I had a twenty-eight inch snowbar. That's how heavy the snow was. So I think that that definitely needs to be revisited and some amendments made to that. So.
Time's up, sir.
Thank you very much. And more FYI in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who should speak? Uh, come here.
Hi, uh, my name is Bob Pollak. And what I'm down here to talk about is a memorandum of understanding that was reached uh, in a rather rushed way, uh, by the outgoing administration. And it deals, uh, with the subject of the construction and plans for the retrofit of the balconies at Dunescape. Let me talk a little bit about Dunescape. Uh, my wife and I have lived there since nineteen ninety-seven. She was born and raised in Michigan City, came back to Michigan City because we thought it was a great place to live uh, and raised our family here. And we're raising some grandchildren here. Um, in Dunescape, there are twenty-five, there are sixty-eight units slash apartments where we live. Twenty-five of those are permanent residents of Michigan City. I don't think most people realize that, but it has a growing situation in which people are coming back and there are a number of them that have moved away from Michigan City and they have moved back. My concern about the memorandum of understanding, first of all, it went through on December the twenty-eighth. And we were told by a number of people at Dunescape, especially, uh, on committees, that this was rushed to get it through before the new administration came in. I think that this was a wrong situation. Number one, this memorandum of understanding, in my opinion, should have at least been reviewed by the planning commission. They needed to understand what this was all about. They also needed to understand that there may be some standards that are being set in here that they may not be positives for the future, especially if you're going to build high rises. And let me just refer to a couple of situations. Um, in a letter to, uh, Dunescape on August the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, uh, Skyler York said, we believe that an engineered retrofit would guarantee the safety of the residence and structural integrity of the building. This would be a great standard to have plans built under and construction built under. I think that is a positive standard. In this memorandum of understanding, they have gone from that to using the term in, uh, retrofit and provide the city with an opinion concerning the suitability of the retrofit. Uh, in my understanding, the term suitability means present. The other term that we're looking at uh, is guarantee the safety of the residence and structural integrity of the building. To me, that refers to the future. Suitability refers to the present. Present meaning that possibly three days later, the standard that they use, they would, any attorney, anyone looking at the situation would just say, well, hey, that was only for this particular time. Future is not there.
I know.
Guarantees of the safety of these people is there. That standard needs to be reviewed and I think it needs to be reviewed publicly by the planning commission. Thank you very much. And I do have one little story. My wife and I actually met at Feder's Alley. Uh, we have two stories about that and my wife won't let me tell it.
Uh.
Thank you very much.
Well, at least he left it on.
Good evening, um, um, Mayor Mayor, uh, Mr. Council President, newly elected and elected, uh, councilpeople.
You mean the head of the register for the register?
Oh, August tomorrow. I like to be called Gus, but don't call me late for dinner, please. Uh, sorry, Mr., uh, and, uh, one hundred Lake Shore Drive. I live right above Bob. Mr. Pollack and Sheila, uh, Bob, we should thank for his service during Vietnam in the Navy. He's a fine gentleman and a great neighbor. I've been there nineteen years and, um, love it. I feel very honored and privileged to be there. Um, I too have similar, uh, issues and support Bob as to what he said. Uh, my whole concern is the fact that this building that we live in is spectacular. I never in my life thought I'd be able to live in a building like this. Uh, I'm very fortunate and blessed. Um, growing up on Chicago's near west side with a five-flat apartment with uh, two sisters, two younger sisters, a father and a mother who passed away. Uh, it was, my father passed away and widowed my mother when I was fourteen. Um, she instilled a great work ethic in me, which pushed me to uh, graduate college with a degree in structural engineering from University of Illinois, Chicago and um, gave me a good, I think a decent amount of character. And she was a waitress. And I'll tell you something right now, I, I would use the word server, which she turned over in her grave if I said server, because she said I'm a waitress. And this young lady gave me a lot. And what she gave me was the realization to be open, honest and look at things from both sides. And there's only one way of looking at this, uh, issue over here at, uh, Dunescape. Um, first of all, I never practiced engineering. I went into real estate development. I've done over two thousand units on Chicago's near west and west sides, including six buildings similar to Dunescape. I did six mid-rises, very similar in height, size, uh, to Dunescape. Not on Lake Michigan, of course. Uh, it concerns me that, uh, many of my neighbors and it, it should be concerned by all Michigan City residents, why the Dunescape Board, our board of directors, our contractor, our engineers, project professionals are receiving privileges uh, that Bob just detailed and described. Uh, the permit, uh, they applied for was thirty thousand dollars, another one for thirty thousand dollars. And if I may have a couple, about thirty more seconds, I'll, I'll finish this. But these three things are important. The work turned out to be almost a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. The re- permit they applied for was fraudulent. No plans, no specifications. The balcony issues still exist after eighteen months. Fortunately, the building commissioner put a stop work order on the building eighteen months ago when she found out that the work was way beyond the scope of the original plan, project. No plans, no, uh, specifications. And basically the agreement that Bob talked about still, still continues to show privilege to us Dunescape residents. Uh, there's no structural licensed engineer that's part of this agreement. And we are at wit's end why this is going on. And we ask this August body to help us out in our endeavors to make sure it's done right. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else from the public who should speak tonight?
Hi, I didn't plan on speaking, but I had such a great meeting that I thought I would say something. So Lauren Nimsevich, one thirty Stanborn. Um, this is my first city council meeting and I really enjoyed it. I think there are some really great topics that you guys addressed. I took a lot of notes, as you can see, I don't take notes. Um, thank you guys for picking up Prash. I've done a lot of rehab at my place. You guys are awesome, so thank you so much. Uh, yeah, we'll talk about that some other time. Um, the Stanborn Castle Home sounds fantastic. That's, I'm really glad to hear that. Uh, anytime we're spending training money, I've done the dis-training through my personal career, my professional career. It's amazing, so I'm glad that we're looking at that. Funding stuff I want to look into, I guess I don't need three minutes. What I just want to say is that as a new resident to Michigan City, I moved here about a year and a half ago. Uh, I'm from Portage originally and the lake drew me in. And as you're looking through and thinking about strategic priorities for the city for this year, I would just ask you to think about long-term in the future, which I'm sure you are, I just want to reiterate it because I think there's so much opportunity at Michigan City to bring in young families, to take care of the lake, to help businesses grow, the businesses that we have, big businesses, small businesses. So great job, everybody. I think you're doing really well and I'm looking forward to hearing more, but also like, let's get more young people in here. I think Michigan City has a great opportunity to grow with the schools and everything like that. So I don't know, like, keep doing a good job, but work even harder.
Well, thank you for all your positive input tonight. That's a great way to finish a meeting. Thank you. Yeah. Anyone else?
Yeah, except I'm going to finish the meeting. Uh, Scott Mallon, Turner Kenwood. I wanted to bring attention to the council of something that may or may not be aware of. We'll notice that we don't have a fourth ward representative on the council at this time. Um, as you know, the elected, uh, councilman resigned and because of that, the rules allow the Democratic Caucus or the Democratic Party of LaPorte County to select a new council member. And the way it works, I found out, is the four precinct chairs of the fourth ward get to make that selection. Now, these are the rules and everybody followed the rules. Um, I just wanted to point out before a technicality invalidated the whole thing, which is why we don't have a representative, that the, the, the caucus of four, only two showed up for the caucus to vote. So the person they selected would have been appointed with only two votes. I don't know how any of you feel about that. Those are the rules, but it doesn't feel very democratic. There's four, four, four precinct members, two of them didn't even show up for the vote. Mm-hmm. And the other two voted for somebody who, because of a weird technicality, can't take the seat at this time. And I don't know how that's going to be resolved. I don't know if there's more news on that. Um, so that's that matter. Sanitation guys, the one-armed bandits, the CNG, the, the refuse, the sanitation department has CNG vehicles. Do they have their own mechanic? They're not particularly hard to work on. There's, there's still a diesel engine, basically, it just runs on a different fuel. Um, the one-armed bandit is the problem because those are now one-man trucks. And unless that can is sitting perfectly with clearance, it can't do its job. Uh, you know, if there's anything on the side or a bulky thing, the driver's supposed to hop out, get out and manually do it. That it's, you know, it's, it's designed for some idyllic suburban setting or something. Um, it's citizens need to help these guys who work really hard. We, we all know what snow we just went through. How many people dug out their cans? So that, me too, and my neighbors, so that they could actually access, access the garbage cans to do their jobs. And, you know, people like to complain, but how many people actually did anything to help these guys out? Um, so that's it. Let's have a great year in Michigan City.
Thank you, Scott.
Let's help out those guys.
Okay. Anyone else from the public who should speak? Anyone else from the public who should speak? Any council comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, real quick, um, the first thing that Mr. Mellon said about the replacement of the, the fourth ward uh, councilman, I just want to, since he asked about it, I'll give an update. Didn't plan on talking about this tonight. Uh, but the technicality that happened was we need an official resignation be sent to the county uh, from the last councilman who was in that spot. And we did not have that, nor was he sworn in. Um, yeah, the technicality, he wasn't sworn in, but then he didn't resign. Um, so when we ran the first caucus, we thought, and we were under the impression that he had been sworn in and resigned with us. We had a, a letter here, but it needed to go to, um, LaPorte in order to get that done. Um, in the meantime, he has done that official resignation. And the caucus is going to be Monday night, uh, the twelfth, six o'clock, uh, here in Michigan City. In regards to the caucus people showing up, they all are contacted. We cannot force them, obviously, if they, they, they show or not, we can't stop the caucus because only two show up. Or we'd never replace the spot. So we have to go with what new people that showed up, so. And we'll have that, that spot filled here, um, on the twelfth. And that's what, that's what they, what happened in terms of not having a fourth ward councilman at this time. But by the next meeting, we will have somebody in that seat and we'll be moving forward.
Okay, any other council comments? Nancy, no. I, pardon?
Yeah.
Oh, Greg, go ahead.
Really quick, I wanted to say something to the people that live at Beach, Beach Club, Beach Walk, not Beach Walk, um, Dunescape, excuse me. Um, I've met with some of the, the residents there. Um, I know you're frustrated. I've seen the work and the work, um, the mess that you're dealing with.
I've got a little bit of this feeling very much. Can I come down so I can?
Yeah.
This is mic on?
It's on.
Is your mic on?
Should I go all the way in? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, but yeah, I spoke with
A little louder.
The, some of the residents of Dunescape, I've seen the construction project. It's, I understood you're frustrated and I just wanted to share that frustration with you and that I hear you. Um, it's frustrating, um, and there needs to be a solution. You're right.
I agree, but I also think that the planning commission needs to start to think about these various high rises. And any standards that they enact or try to enact might carry over and they have to think about the future, how would that affect high-rise development? Mic on. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Any other comments from the council? Having none, just one I want to, uh, discuss, I got this in the mail and I'm going to talk to the, uh, mayor's office tomorrow if we can't get this put online. But the state of Indiana, through the Indiana, and this is for folks that probably can't pay their heating bills, that the Indiana Energy Assistance Program provides a one-time annual benefit that can assist qualified Hoosiers with the high cost of home energy and can help those who are about to get disconnected. And the application for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four program closes May twentieth of this year at four o'clock. And to learn more, you go online and you apply. Uh, and you can also call the Northwest Indiana Community Action Corporation or the North Central Community Action Agency right here in Michigan City. But anyway, I'm going to call the mayor's office, uh, put that online so people can, uh, take a look at it that are having problems paying their, uh, heating bills. And with that, And with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, meeting is now over. Thank you.